Too large, so there's a problem with their material, basically. So again, we have a shortage. So we need to be able to stockpile that material or road yards. So that when we have these great goals of hitting seventy miles or eighty miles or even a hundred miles, we have the material because.
Do you think twelve thousand tons was going to do seventy miles or did I misunderstand?
Seven, uh, twelve thousand tons should do about, yeah, they won't do quite seventy miles. Because what we do is we take into account what we did last, or last calendar year, but this fiscal year. Okay, so seventy miles is over the fiscal year. So with the twelve thousand tons, that will give us everything we need this year, plus some towards next fiscal year, actually. Yeah, and we are looking to stockpile more material than that. What we'd like to have is probably twenty thousand tons of materials sitting at our sites. So that we can go out and chip seal any roads and we can hire a contractor and we're not sweating having this material around.
Yeah, you could cover as material. So wh- where are these sites at? Where do you put them at?
Uh, it depends. We're very strategic because we like to make sure that logistics makes sense. So we may have like, say, Furch Road, we'll stockpile it at our transfer station. We use the solid waste site and, and, uh, it, well, we use solid waste sites all over the county to stockpile material. We also have some properties where people let us put material. I think sun sites, they let us put it behind the, uh, phone company at one time. We have, uh, some places like on Gleason that are on the side of the road. They technically belong to the county, the right of way. Uh, Wilcox has a big piece of right of way on the side of, uh, Fort Grant Road, places like that where we'll stockpile this material.
And nobody stags it?
So people do once in a while back their truck up. Now, the reserve material I'm talking about, stockpiling would go at our road yards where it's fenced and secure. So our.
I got out by where the garbage dump is by me, out there off the Dragoon Road.
Right, and it's fairly secure there.
That's fenced and locked.
Gated. So most of our reserves, we would keep it at a road yard fenced and locked. The materials that we're getting ready to use, of course, it's, it's cheaper for the county to truck it right from Maddox and Sons to as close as we can to that road so that we're not moving in another seventy miles or whatever. That they were starting to chip seal. Plus, we don't have enough truck drivers to make that turnaround. That's, it's important that that chip spreader just continually move and then dump truck moves out of the way and another one comes in hooks that's loaded and he continually moves. So if you get too far away from your chick, chip stock, you're, you're sitting there waiting for the trucks to come back. And so you're just burning labor hours, just sitting around waiting for this. That's why it's super important for us to stockpile too. We can't go all the way to Stafford to chip seal a road in Benson or in, in Douglas. It would just not make sense.
How many people, I'm sorry, how many people do you have in your stack just now?
So roughly forty, yeah, give or take, and we're talking highways only.
When you do chips to, I, I, I looked at Ramsey and, you know, which you just did last week for a couple of stuff. And somebody, hey, they turned my paving road into gravel road, so now it's chip sealed, supposed to shade it and all this kind of stuff. I had to explain what was going on. Is it beneficial for, for the excess to go off on the shoulder? Does it help the shoulder?
So what happens is, what always happens is when you put your oil down and then you put your chip down, you're putting a three-eighths chip on top of this oil and there will be extra chip that's on the road. And what we do is we like to let the residents drive on that. We roll it with a steel roller and a rubber tire roller and all kinds of things to get that stuff to kind of pack down. We like to wait just a little bit of time and then we sweep off the excess onto the shoulder. It's good for the shoulder, more or less too, it'll help you keep that edge of pavement good, to have a little bit of chip on the side of the road. But then we come back in after that's all done and we'll fog this stuff so it locks. We use fog oil.
Fog oil.
Over the top of the chip. And what that'll do is it'll help preserve, yeah, and it'll, it tightens up some of those chip, not a whole lot. It doesn't do what the tack oil does, but it does turn the road nice and black too. Doesn't look like a gravel road anymore and then that's what we put our stripes on. So road materials, our hot mix, cold mix, et cetera, that we talked about, our hot mix is asphalt. Uh, you had asked me once before about asphalt. A lot of times we'll use a few truck loads here and there to get a rep, prep for chip seal season with hot mix. We don't really have asphalt roads, but that's what we use that asphalt.
So is there any, America, you still ask me, is there any potential to be able to use their asphalt that, you know, they bought of asphalt plant or whatever you've taught in Douglas? Is there any chance to use any of that from them?
So that, that, that's what I'm, that's what I mean. So that hot mix potentially could be used to patch a road. Or, or to address some issue that we're having where the road keeps popping up. We may remove a portion of the chip seal and go back in with hot mix. And then that gets chip sealed over typically after that's all done.
Now, is there a hot, is there an asphalt plant also in service then?
There is, K E and G's in service and that's who we typically use.
And now you have a second source in Douglas, I think it'll be up and running in July or something.
Yeah, I mean, not yet, but yeah, I mean, it sounds like it's, it's on its way to be up and running and potentially we could be using them for business. And I assume we would still do like we do with our chip and it would be more logistics thing. Like we're on the east side of the county versus the west or something like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
So I, I gotta, this is more for Stacy. So he's got, this is, you, you weren't here for the previous meeting, so you, you won't get this. So here he is, he's got interest revenue, he budgets approximately eighty K. So far this year, he's got four hundred and fifty-seven K. What, where does that come from?
Comes from the charter.
She, so she's.
It's based on his cash balance.
Okay, so he gets the interest generated from the budget.
From his cash.
That's get, gets allocated. She separates that and knows what each separate.
Yes, so she has a, a place marker in time based on her investment.
So she basically made the guy a half a million bucks in, in interest.
Potentially, that, that number's really hard for us to gauge. We go back years and that number goes way up and down. And there's points and times where we look at that number and it'll change before the end of the year too. And it, it goes down or it can go up.
No, yeah, I can, I got it.
So there, there is, um, this being the fund that it is, it is the highway fund, so not general fund, it's its own special revenue.
So do we get that all in one lump sum?
No.
We do not. We get it monthly.
So this fund itself is a major fund on our financial charts, on our financial papers. So we do, we do a, a number of accounting entries on this for unearned revenues or not, um, sorry, undeposited funds and, um, potential gain, like unrealized gain losses. And that's what you're seeing when, when your actual interest revenue takes a nosedive is when we're making that end of year adjustment for uner, unrealized gains and losses. So over the years, we, we, finance calculates that amount. And because of the way the market is, we do have significant unrealized losses that happens. Kathy is absolutely correct in saying she's never lost principal. She always gets a turnaround on her things. But in the five-year in-between, the market going up and down can cause those kind of things. So yes, he does receive a good chunk of interest revenue during the year. Um, but if you actually look at the balance sheet for, uh, for this fund itself, there are a number of things that we take off as accruing, um, accounting entries that are not real cash entries.
So the board knows, we do, we do basically look at that and keep it artificially low, at least, I think. And the reason being is I'd rather be surprised than have more money than come back and find out we don't have as much as I thought we would.
Stacy, could you tell us about the cash carry forward on the bottom of the first page? It seems to me I like to ask something about cash carry forward the other day for.
General fund. Or I think it's for a general fund, but you were asking for Grant. Yeah, yeah, so in, in this one, cash carry forward is used to represent an amount that was earned in prior years that the department is budgeting for and wishes to use.
Yeah, but he doesn't do that, he spends everything he has to.
No, so, so this year we do have cash carry forward in here and there is an increasing reciprocal budget line, um, where he is using that.
What do you mean by the increasing reciprocal line?
Do you know where you stuck it?
As far as our cash carry forward.
Uh, yeah, where, what is the expense that matches that or what?
It's mostly in our materials and in our professional services. Because we plan on, again, kind of going back to the material, stockpiling some material and getting more roads done, getting some more miles done. We find ourselves falling behind occasionally. We have this goal of seventy miles. Well, I really look at that as kind of a minimum goal. And I'd like to get ourselves pushed out there where we're doing more than that. Uh, getting roads really maintained so we can go back and pay attention to some of the roads that are getting neglected. We have certain roads that get a lot of traffic on, we've got to deal with those. We can get ahead of that just a little bit. We can go back and maintain some of the roads that haven't been maintained in twenty or thirty years. There, they do exist out there. And we do have some contingency funds this year that we're trying to build up just a little bit because we have some major road projects that Jackie and I are always looking at kind of future, you know? Okay, well, in five years, this road's gonna have to have some major work done on it. It's gonna cost us twenty million dollars or whatever, so we want to get as close to that goal as possible. While we're still maintaining our roads.
Uh, do you expect the, the price of oil to go up or down or, you know, wait and see?
So we're anticipating it to go up. But that's just because anytime we have any kind of major change, uh, it could be weather, it can be political reasons or whatever. We, we sometimes see fluctuations in fuel and oil and we just want to be prepared for that. So we did put a cushion in there for road materials and stuff, anticipating that they could go up.
Okay, remember how much of a cushion as far as percent?
Uh, in road materials, I want to say.
Oil, uh, oil or oil-based fuel, uh, the asphalt, everything made out of oil.
Yeah, so, and everything is. So our heavy fleet lines could go up and our material lines can go up and all those kinds of things. Um, in our road materials, we cushioned it by, I think, three or four hundred thousand. Like it's not a ton. And contract, like our professional services, we bumped it up a bit too. Because we know that that's gonna have a major impact on anything, you know?
Or it's just like roads.
Yeah, exactly. And if we get lucky, the fuel prices, I've seen them, uh, state, they're fairly stable right now. They actually went down this week, I think, uh, six or eight cents the gallon or something. So, uh, for the county costs, I don't know what it's doing out there for everybody else. I mean, I kind of keep an eye on it, but it doesn't seem to be doing anything too major. So that kind of covers our road materials, moving on to heavy fleet usage charges. These are charges that are, uh, occurred by our, all of our road graders out there and our boot trucks and everything doing the work. So this is what we pay fleet for the heavy use charges. Now, the heavy use charges are basically direct charges. So there is no, there's typically no contingency in fleet because of these charges or anything. They charge us pretty much what it costs them, okay? Heavy fleet replacement charges at the bottom of that page, you'll see where it says we pause the, the contributions. And the reason for that is, is we had some contingency in that line in the fleet side. And we can talk about that again on Friday when we go through the fleet budget. But we, we, we call it a pause of one point one. Typically, highways will contribute one point one million dollars to fleet to buy new equipment every year. That's replacement road graders, which we're getting ready to buy another one. Uh, we're getting ready to buy another chip spreader and some other things to keep our lives going well.
So when you buy those, you buy them new?
Uh, like the road graders typically are new. So a used road grader, uh, currently, the prices are so similar to a new road grader.
We're buying the new.
Oh, yeah, and then with the warranties and all the admissions issues that we're having with the new equipment, we want to make sure we're buying stuff under warranty and the money's well spent. But typically, we'll have that warranty for a few years and it'll cover anything we have, issues out there. So we paused that contribution of one point one because there was a contingency of like one point three in fleet. Again, we can talk about that again on Friday, but just to let you guys know that, you know, the board, highways will have to go back to contributing that one point one next year. We just wanted to spend down that contingency in fleet. So we gave highways a break, basically. That's where the one point one got pushed up into our road materials and our, uh, professional services. Okay, so we're basically, fleet gave highways some money back, highways is gonna use it on materials and getting roads fixed. Oh, the next slide, it kind of goes back over the, uh, the diesel fuel. Professional services, we kind of talked about. Uh, the diesel fuel is just everything we burn in the big, the big equipment. Professional services is what we were talking about, the contracting, the services out. We typically will spend one, one point five million in this line every year. And that usually gets us sixteen, twenty miles of road done by a contractor, okay? So again, going back to why, what we're doing here is we got Fred and Fred's crew out there doing seventy miles and then we have a contractor coming in and doing fifteen or twenty. So we're getting close to that hundred mile mark as far as chip seal go.
So that's your professional services, two point two million is contract.
Yes. Yep. The operating leases and rental, uh, the majority of this is our new R M T software. This is software we talked about a month ago or so.
I just learned that today too, that that gets put under rentals.
Yeah, yeah, so the, these are, uh, basically they call it a road runner and these things get mounted to a bunch of different vehicles. We have twenty vehicles these you're gonna be mounted to. And this, this, this fee is, uh, basically to contract that stuff out. All that information we're gonna be getting on our roads and whatnot. We typically pay around a hundred thousand dollars a year just to get, uh, pavement condition index. So this will give us this and more, not to mention this will also help the engineering work group out a little bit. There's some things in there that'll help them, because there's cameras on some of these vehicles as well.
Is, is that the primary check is, uh, visual?
No, it's, so it does, uh, like vibration, it'll tell you density. I, I don't know how accurate that is, but the pavement condition index and it has the camera. So you'll also, you know, see if it needs crack filled or need, you know, if it's got potholes and things like that. And it'll basically generate a map that shows us how good our roads are doing. And it'll give us a red, green or a yellow kind of configuration on green roads are good, yellow roads are marginal, red roads are poor. That kind of thing. But that's where that comes from.
What is R M T staple?
Road management technology. Um, the contingency, you can see there's two point nine million. This kind of goes back to what I talked about with the engineering work group. It's basically trying to have a little nest egg there. Or we have some money that if something was to happen on one of our roads, bridges or whatever, we'd have some money that we could move forward into operating and we could fix a road for whatever reason.
Is that the contingency fund amount, the typical, is what you've had from year to year?
Typically, it's lower than that. It's a little higher now, we're trying to build that up every year by a little bit.
So I got a Stacy question. So on, uh, page four of his budget worksheet, right? So you've got electricity, natural gas, water, refuse sewage, all that stuff up top. And then on the bottom, you have overhead, nine hundred K. So what's, what's the difference between overhead, where he's spending on electricity, garbage and everything else? Is that not included in that overhead amount? That's separate?
Oh, yes, it, it technically is separate.
So what, what does overhead entail?
Except the internal services overhead?
Yes, yes.
So that's, the highway fund pays back to the county for things like human resources, finance.
So that's, he's basically, it's a tax that.
We charge.
That you charge him for his department, he pays nine hundred and eighty-three K?
Yes, and that's, um, calculated every year through a independent report, um, to us, what overhead we should charge.
It is, his total overhead is like twenty percent if you add in the, the fees up top and the overhead down the bottom.
So the, the fees up top would actually be part of the calculation that the, the contractor uses to create these, these overhead flows. So if you look at, uh, Jason, do you recall what kind of, um, data you turn in to HAW for the overhead calculation for highways?
Any sir?
So both are mainly for our road yards.
No, I, I got, I got it, so that's overhead in the world I live in, right? So you're, you're paying utilities, you're, you're paying associated costs with the, the building maintenance and everything on those yards, right? So that, I get that, and I actually like that that's broken out on here, because a lot of times you don't see that breakout. But then, then down the bottom here, he's got nine hundred and eighty-three K. And that is from what I understand, you guys tax him. But when you add those two together, you know, that's two million dollars. And the guy's budget's eleven million, it's almost twenty percent of his budget. That's kind of high.
I would, I would love to provide you with the, uh, report itself, the overhead allocation report. Um, I think maybe you would actually like to dive into.
I just want to know why you're charging him a million bucks in overhead when, when he's already, he's already paying.
I, and no, I'm, and I'm not being facetious here, I think you would actually enjoy looking at those numbers.
I'm just curious why, why it's basically, you, you know, I, I know there's H R relative overhead. I know there's other county services relative overheads, but I'm trying to get a, get a feel for that.
So the attorneys is a big piece of that too.
The attorneys, comes out of overhead?
Yes, from what I understand.
But when you have any kind of suits or somebody standing over the road, any, any kind of internal services that are.
Why is it, is it, is this another thing in the statute that says it's gotta be under this category? Because why, why do you have a, why don't you just have a separate budget line item for attorney's fees?
That would be if you were paying them direct.
Because that doesn't count as, well, and technically we do pay attorney.
Risk management.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, the cost of doing business is being part of the county, but they're a special revenue fund. So we have to reimburse the county for the cost of.
Were you saying our county attorney?
Our county attorney or risk management or insurance or.
That's not included in her budget?
She, no, not set up, but she, yeah. Trying to make this as simple as possible.
Yeah, it, it can get pretty opaque on, on what is actually.
I don't know, man, it's, it's like we're paying a lot of, lot of, lot of movement stuff around stuff. I'm, I'm learning here.
I know.
And I mean, I mean. I'm, I'm looking at it from, from just my experience with, with budgets, right? So I, I, I get it and sometimes you have to pay, you know, I even have taxes that I pay that when I get, one of my engineers charges an hour, there's money that comes out of that, goes to various entities within, within the, within the company. But what I'm getting at is generally, generally speaking, the breakout that you're describing to me is too inclusive, not is. So I, what I understand is if you're paying for attorneys and there's legal fees, it's not overhead in my, in the world that I live in. It, it, it is a separate, overhead is all the standard routine stuff, right? It's, it's, it's the utility bills, it's taxes, it's, it's, that's overhead. Now, we don't pay taxes because we're the government. But I mean, usually that's what's in, built in an overhead.
So I, I think on this one, since it's HERF, you know, persons for, for I T or facilities, for them to do work for the HERF buildings rather than charging per hour, that's where the overhead piece comes in. Electricity and all that stuff, we.
I'm gonna have to sit down with you and get, get, get an education on.
We have a, we have a real thick cost allocation plan.
I just, what I don't want is, I don't want like a double dip in a situation where you got him paying for an attorney and then we're budgeting money to go to the attorney and paid for an attorney.
And there, there is a significant separation in the way this one is treated.
But I mean, if it was broken out, if it was broken out where I could see what that is.
The cost allocation plan does have those kind of things.
That's what, that's what, so I'll come, I'll come down and see, because I just, uh, just want to make sure we're not.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it has, it has all the way down to year line details of what percentage of, of internal services are paying for this, this and this and what it adds up to.
The other thing we have to be careful of is like, uh, attorneys' judgment damages and stuff directly we can, uh, pay out of HERF. So we have to use our other revenues. So if that amount ever exceeded the amount we make in other revenues, we would have to really watch that.
And it's up to twenty-five K per, right, is that our deductible?
That's our deductible, yeah. For, I think for a large incident, like if we have a, a vehicle accident, I think it's only five thousand. So it depends on the incident.
Like a road grader backing into a police car?
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-five or fifty K.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, feces accursed, so.
So, I mean, that kind of concludes what I had for the board today. Um, I, I have that last slide for questions, if there's any discussion.
So you guys are more just doing the actual work, right? the actual work, right, where studies and all that comes out of engineering?
Correct. We're the operations side of the highway, so we're the ones that are actually like, you know, chip sealing the roads, buying the oil. We talked about oil and the materials. Jackie's work group, uh, or engineering side will tell us what needs to be done to what roads and so forth. We do that on the maintenance side of stuff. But we also take into consideration things that they may hear through the grapevine or they're also notified by, um, like for instance, A dot, will go out and inspect our bridges. We just recently had an issue where a bridge was failing in an, in an area. And um Jackie hit up our work group, so we wouldn't have to.
That's the one you talked to us about last week, the bridge. Jackie, is that the bridge? Oh, it's a different bridge? Okay.
We've had a couple of bridge issues.
Yeah.
And then, uh, you know, if time permits for operations to go out and do it, instead of contracting it out, costing a bunch of money. If we have the funds and stuff and the time to do it within our work group, we'll go out and do it. We've just repaired two bridges this year, actually. So.
I was gonna point out that uh, this budget does bear um operational control with uh Miss Walkin's over there. So the two people, the two individuals do have to work together to balance this budget, but we do have a separate work session on engineering.
On engineering. So public works is the big, the bigger umbrella.
So if you guys wanted to talk any of that through highways and engineering, I'm happy to, but really this is more, that would be more Jackie's wheelhouse. Like, like Stacy said, we share the budget, so I understand where the money is going and allocated and those kinds of things. Um, but.
There's like a six hundred dollar, I'm trying to find where I marked this, six, six hundred dollars for land or something. Was that the Biden's, is that what that's for?
Uh, it might have been for our taxes this year.
Here it is right here. Page four, six hundred and forty three dollars and forty one cents for land.
I want to say that was for our taxes. That amount rings a bell. So what happened was we had some property.
Taxes for what?
So basically some residents will donate property at times and the county will assume them. This was before my time. I found out we owned two parcels over in Sunsite's area. And I asked Dan to auction them off. I believe that's what this is.
Oh.
And I asked Dan to auction it off because I'm, I'm not really.
It's not a lot of money. I was just curious, curious with the, I thought maybe you were buying, you know, five feet of.
No.
The, a road.
Not, not us.
You know, Jackie, do we do that though?
Jackie will buy right of way on.
And before Jason and I were here, I think this was twenty seventeen. At that time, they said, yeah, public works or it was highway and floodplain department, they said they wanted the property, but there's back taxes owed. So we had to pay those back taxes. And then we um are auctioning it off this next time because we didn't.
Came across that, thought it was kind of odd. As soon as I found out we had it, I put, you know, I put it out for development services just to auction it off, because we have no need to have that. Then there was no county roads adjoining that land. I'm not sure why it was absorbed into highways for whatever reason, so.
Was Richard Rosatte, what was his position? He was?
I believe he was a supervisor in Douglas.
In Douglas, okay.
I, I've been around a long time with the county, but I wasn't working with him personally.
Okay. So he was from Douglas, right, guys, that day, okay?
Yeah, I believe he was the supervisor. Was, do you remember?
Was that big? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And that would have been a few, quite a few years ago, I think, yeah.
And who is it now?
Just, I'm traveling in Douglas.
His name is George. I'm sorry, go ahead. And he does Alfreda and Douglas Road Yards. Reason being is they're fairly small work groups and then the square mileage kind of equals what the other guys have to do as far as roads and so forth.
Who's named that refinery you get the oil from again? Western Emulsions. Western Emulsions, alright. Where are they at? They're in Tucson. Alright, let me do some Googling. Any other questions uh for Mr. Fazio?
But uh, on page eight of nine, it says, in the middle of the page, professional service, contractual services, and uh, between two and there's a million dollars. Is that, is that your wheelhouse or is that, that the wheelhouse that has the?
That's guys, yeah.
You're going white on traffic signs, dude. You need to step it up. Oh, that'd be Jackie.
So I'm seeing cellular phone charges, which I don't. We're seeing the other ones, is there a reason?
Oh, they're, they're, they're in the other ones.
Are they in the other ones? You just haven't seen them?
Oh, that's good that they break that up. I like seeing that, that breakout.
And it is a bigger number for us because we have all the road yards and so we have quite a few phones out there.
Yeah. Do you get connected when?
Probably fifty seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, most places. We still have a couple of places with that connection.
Yeah, so each department gets to choose what they, what they have for cell phones. And then the I P department manages it, however, each department is charged back for what.
You think of an overhead for that?
And then we put it up. The overhead of the, the people that manage.
I got, I got you. We have connected. How that, where that million bucks, nine hundred eighty K comes out of, I'd like to just see how that breaks out. So, well, I don't, I'm not saying it's wrong, but if, if, if there's money going to somebody from his budget, I want to know, how do you reconcile that? That's what I'm trying to get. How do you, how do you reconcile to make sure that you're not?
Study, you're over here in the study. So, yeah, I think you can sit down. On finance and they can walk you through that.
Is there, is there in the, for example, the county attorneys, is there, this is the money we got from Fazio in there?
No, it goes into our.
Even more worried.
All the, all the revenue that we are, I just, it's contrary.
It's a pool, a pool fund.
Yes, it goes all into a specific activity that uh has per parcel fees and a few other things in it.
And then, then tracks the way that the distribution from the side of that pool fund.
Finance.
Finance, okay.
How many, can you have one thing in the board?
In finance, I think there's thirteen, right? Well, thirteen, yeah, I think there's thirteen. Yeah, I used to be over there. Every, every internal sort of, anything we do for.
Alright, I got nothing else for, for you guys' questions. No more questions? Alright, Jason, thanks for swinging by.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Alright, uh, we'll meet again at two o'clock for the discussion on the county treasurer's investments. And we'll be uh meeting in here as well. So we're here until then.